Meetings called to order. Take the roll call, please.
Chair McKnight-Morton.
Here.
Vice Chair Fleming.
Here.
Hunter Milligan.
Here.
Secretary Davis. Trustee DeBarty. Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Lindau.
Here.
We'll have the approval of the minutes in Tab A.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll go down to citizen participation, verbal communications, WCC. Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the agenda? Missed that.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Oh, I thought it was second.
That's with Tab K. The new tab as well.
With the two, I'm sorry, Tab K.
Two additions.
Two additions. Correct. Okay. Go down to citizen participation, WCCEA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple of points. The first is that I was very pleased to see the addition on the agenda of the appointment of a negotiating team. I wanted to let you know that my board will be taking up the same agenda item when we meet on Thursday. And pending the board's rejection, which I don't expect, our negotiating team will be led by Jason Withrow, our chief negotiator. I will be on the team, Julie Kissel, Justin Carter. All of us are veterans of at least one negotiation. And Kim Gross will also be added to the team for a well-rounded team. We're looking forward to a, hopefully, a productive and speedy negotiations. Second thing is I wanted to thank, first of all, Lynn Grace and Sam Veltrey and their staffs for, on behalf of the entire WCC employee group, not just my members, for the speed with which they have acted to resolve in WCCs and the mess of the 3 percent decision by the Supreme Court. They've kept everyone well informed about what's going on. It's just, I've got, I can't say enough, Lynn and Sam, for the job that folks have been doing and that, and I really appreciate it. That was going to be, all I was going to say until Trustee McKnight-Morton and Vice President Blakely both asked me the same question, so I'll make a personal note here, which is, Trustee McKnight-Morton asked me how my speaking engagement went in Batavia, New York, a couple of weekends ago, and the answer is it didn't. It was canceled because they were going to get a foot of snow on the day of the presentation. Batavia's in the snowbells in upstate New York. And so I'm currently scheduled to be back out there the weekend that winter break begins. And so we'll try to do it all over again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Written communications?
There were two received.
Could you say what they were?
One was about the fitness center issue, and the other was in regards to the MOP search movement.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're going down to number four, technology trends in higher education, special reports.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
So when Diana, our board chair, McKnight-Morton, and vice chair Fleming, and I met, we talked about this evening's meeting and focusing it primarily on technology, where we would have, so we would have an opportunity to talk about the opportunities and the challenges that technology brings to our campus, and the decisions that we need to make in order to provide a safe environment, a risk-free environment, as well as an environment where we can access all of the IT different applications and that our students, as well as our visitors and our employers, are using. As you can imagine, this, IT today has changed quite a bit, and it will continue to evolve. So this evening, Vice President, you know, I keep wanting to call him his name, Bill, okay, but Vice President Johnson is going to share a presentation about where we're at in the area of IT as we, and then based on that, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion, even while we're having the presentation, because that's the reason we set this table up, the configuration, when we talked. The reason we set it up this way is so that we could have a discussion here that would be, you know, more, would be easier, the flow would be easier between us. So if you don't have any questions, then I'd like to turn it over to Vice President Johnson.
Great, thank you. Good evening. You all got some reading assignments about a week, a week ago.
Yes, we did.
So I appreciate you spending the time to go through, and we provided a short summary. They were, as the topic might suggest, kind of leading trends, and so I told Rose it was like doing a mini doctoral thesis in about three weeks' time to simplify it down to what I thought would be some really important reading for the board. It's really meant to be an engaging discussion around the trends in higher ed, and then specifically as it relates to WCC. So what I intend to do is, assuming that you had a chance to peruse those articles, is to kind of weave the fabric of what that looks like for us, and then for us to talk about that tonight. So specifically, you know, we'll talk about the Internet of Things, IoT as it's called, and just kind of where that is, and how that might impact us, the top trends in technology, security issues, student success, and the role that IT plays in helping to enable the college around its student success initiatives, the need for data governance, what that is, why it's important, and how we really can leverage that regulatory compliance. There are a lot of new laws and rules that have started to unfold here the last few years. And really then just agility. Agility as an IT department, as a college, to bring new technologies to bear in a way that's useful to the campus, and yet secure as well. And then really, what should our response be to this backdrop, if you will, as to where we find ourselves? So starting with the Internet of Things, it really refers to devices and sensors that are able to communicate directly with other devices using Internet technologies. Data's transmitted, it's between devices, the sensors, it's processed, it's acted upon. And this was really telling to me as I thought more and more about it. And usually results in changes to some of the devices in how they respond based upon the data that they have, without human intervention. So what does that mean? If you think about the smart Internet of Things, the things that are going on today in higher education, you know, personalized learning using adaptive e-textbooks, digital classrooms, IBMs, wearables for athletics and attendance tracking, supplies and inventory tracking, maker spaces with 3D printing, the Internet of Things for HVAC, how we manage our facilities, how we monitor our air, for transportation, getting to and from campus, and if you happen to be driving a car once you get to campus, where are the available parking spaces once you get to campus? The way that we use Wi-Fi for monitoring entrances and exits, classroom access points, cameras, security cameras, network applications, and then a whole bunch of things related to kind of behind the scenes, all the things that are in the cloud or things that we're looking at putting in the cloud. So when you think about the backdrop today, this isn't tomorrow, this is today, this is kind of all going on today. Our students are bringing at least one, if not two, two different devices to campus. Many of our employees have a minimum of two, if not three, devices that they're using on campus. The services that they're accessing, both college-provided services and other services, and how those react and respond, are all part of Internet of the Things. But what does that really mean for us, right? I really liked this picture, because it kind of gives a sense of the process. You have device connection and connectivity, you have device and data sensing and collecting, you're transporting that data, you're accessing that data, you're doing analytics on the data, you're creating value as being driven by that data. Actions can be dependent upon the data that comes about. And then there's human value on the apps and that experience, and that's a continuous loop that's going on each and every day. It's going on today in large respect here at WCC without our direct intervention. It's going on passively through the devices that we use. It's going on actively through the devices we use. Let's just take our HVAC system, or our camera systems, or our door access systems. We are using that data to help to inform us around how to make this campus effective and useful for everybody that's here on campus. Are we doing a lot of learning with it? Are we taking that learning and putting it back into ways that we can improve, right? That is, that's all things that we're really not doing as much as we could be doing, and we, as a campus, need to start to embrace how we could be using that more. But if you just think about the number of devices that are connecting each and every day, we continue to increase our Wi-Fi bandwidth. And literally, within minutes of when we increase it, it's fully utilized. I mean, the capacity for bandwidth for our campus community is a very strong appetite, in large part being driven by the Internet of Things. So what does that mean? And where does our focus need to be? It really is starting to focus on an Internet of Things architecture for the campus. And so that we really need to think about the network, we need to think about the things, the things that are attaching to the network, the things that are attaching to the cloud, and how they interact. We need to think about the cloud infrastructure, and we need to think about the gateways for access to those things. So for instance, today, the college doesn't have a security protocol around a device, my phone, I can, just as you all can get access to our Wi-Fi without any authentication, without any identification. A best practice would say, that might be okay for certain things, like access to the Internet per se, but anything beyond the Internet might require authentication. And what does that look like? And how do we make that secure, yet how do we make it as open as it needs to be to help foster and support the learning and the activities that go on on campus? But as we've built systems, as we've built our network, as we've provided our Wi-Fi access, it really hasn't been done in the context of the Internet of Things and what that architecture needs to look like. And I would say that's probably true for most campuses, that we're just starting, as collectively as a higher education group, starting to think about what that might look like. But it's profound, and it's growing at an exponential rate each and every day. And it's kind of a backdrop for a lot of the other discussion that we'll have tonight around that. So then with that backdrop on the Internet of Things, I had provided a list of kind of the top 10 leading issues in higher education as taken through. And I really, I validated this particular one against three or four other different surveys, and they all pretty much have the same things. But I thought it was useful to think about those top 10 items grouped by four different areas. Successful students, and which of those leading issues kind of were grouped within their student success and completion, and the digital transformation of learning. Data foundations, so the foundations for making good decisions around student success, and how you manage that data, how you govern that data. Effective leadership, the leadership within IT and the leadership throughout the campus as it relates to technology. How do we create and foster the right kind of technology leadership that isn't bound by silos of organizations, but rather is a collaborative, integrated effort across the campus? And how do you do that well? Sustainable funding. I mean, if we think, think about all the wonderful technologies that are out there today and those that are on the horizon, and we think about how they could be very useful here on campus, how do we support that? On what base do you build that upon? What costs are associated with each of those layers? And is it really just too incremental? Or are there ways to manage that so that you think hard about outsourcing some, putting some on the cloud, some you leave on campus, some you bring in experts for, some you really staff up for within? But it's incumbent upon us to manage that, to manage that in an integrated, sustainable way, so it's just not an ever-growing cost structure for the college. And that really gets to that last part there, affordability, right? Tuition rates for students, as we've always talked about, is the one tool we have as a college to help provide that balanced budget. Property taxes, to a large extent, will be what they're going to be, state aid is going to be what it's going to be. Enrollment, we try hard to make that as strong as it can be, but the tuition rates that we apply, that is. So if we think about stacking more and more costs of technology, where is that going to be funded? And how do we do that in a way so that affordability for our students is ever-present in front in our thinking? And it's incumbent upon us as a college, and certainly incumbent upon us within IT, to be really serious about that work around affordability. The foundations, security, and we're going to talk a bit about that tonight, sustainable staffing. In this world of strong competition for technology professionals, it's becoming harder and harder to maintain that staffing at levels that can support the gambit of things that are there. And last but not least, many of our systems are dated systems. They're 10- to 15-year-old platforms that we've done some improvements to, our providers have done some improvements to, but they're really not the next-gen platform. And if you really want to leverage the technologies and the value of Internet of Things, you need to be on this new platform, and it needs to be done in a way that's secure. And so we'll talk a bit more about that tonight. So let's move on to the number one issue that's been on everybody's mind around security, developing a holistic, agile approach to reducing institutional exposure to information security threats. It would be, the easiest path would be for us in IT just to simply segment, partition, lock down every step that we all do to access technologies. That would be pretty easy to do. I mean, there's a lot of costs involved, but it'd be pretty easy. As a campus, it would create sheer chaos, in the sense that folks would be frustrated, they would feel like they have to go through 25 steps of validation, authentication, to get to where they need to get to. And that's not a viable solution for security, especially in higher education, where it's open and transparent, it's accessible. We want to foster the ease of use for creativity and for learning and for student success. And so we really think and need to think hard about, as we address the threats that are there each and every day for us, that we think hard about ways that we build systems that do that. If you look at how and where breaches come from, the attacks, right? About a third of them come from phishing attacks. We had one today, where somebody, I'm sure that some of the board members saw, that there was an email that was sent out on campus on behalf of President Blanca, and it said, hey, look at this, we got this great new status report on the results from 2017, click on this link and give us a few bits of information about yourself, and we'll get you access to this stuff. So that's, those things, those phishing attacks happen every day. We have lots of strong tools to help to cleanse that. We leverage our cloud partners like Microsoft, who does their best to filter all these things out, but every once in a while, one of them slips through. So those kind of attacks happen, and that's about a third. 24 percent is just employee actions slash mistakes, right? I didn't mean to leave my screen up when I walked away from my desk, but I did, and somebody walked by with malintent and grabbed that information, it might be a file of social numbers or whatever it is, right? Things happen, right? I used the same password for all five of my applications, and that password was password, okay? Employee actions, mistakes. And yes, 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 we do have that happen. External threats, right? I have a college-issued laptop, I'm at a meeting that's off-campus, I leave my laptop there for just a minute, and I go back and it's gone. What did I store on that laptop? Just how secure was that laptop? That's real, and it happens. Vendors. Vendors, we really trust vendors. Take Simplex, Grinnell, Siemens, Honeywell. These are major third-party vendors that have access to our building systems, we rely upon them to maintain the software. How well are they maintaining that software for any known bugs and threats? How well are they updating that software on our systems? How well are they vetting their employees, who we give access to our network, so they can access those systems? How well are they vetting their employees and monitoring their actions? Then vendor risk is real. I think that we've had, we've all seen some articles. Internal theft. Internal theft happens. And last but not least, lost or improper disposal, right? I delete something off of my email system, but I don't permanently delete it. I put it in trash but don't permanently delete it. It's not gone. If I happen to have given up my credentials, one of the first places that the bad guys are going to look for is, what did I put in my trash can, right? So those are, this gives you a sense of that. I love this quote, it's from CIO at Becker College. People think that information security is about technology, but it's really about educating people. 90 percent of all breaches have some sort of human component. If you think back to the prior slide, a lot of those are human, and a lot of them are from within, just different things that we do. So education, user awareness, is really, really important, not just once, once, once a year, but throughout the year. This next slide, I went out to one of the databases, and this probably isn't 100 percent of all breaches, but it's the ones at this database that tries to find out. I went back for three, for three years, and just got a list of all the higher ed institutions that have reported breaches in the last three years. And it's 123 on this list here alone. Higher education is becoming one of the most prone areas, most susceptible areas, for the very reasons that we love about higher education. It's accessible, it's open, it's transparent. And so the attackers know this, they have been probing very, very hard, and this is a good example of that. So the areas of focus for us need to be in these key areas, in phishing attacks, right? How do we continue to learn? The one that just happened today, right? How do we learn? How do we work with Office 365, Microsoft? How do we look at our firewall systems? And how do we get a little bit smarter tomorrow about what happened today and continue to refine? That learning loop is active, and we just can't rely on ourselves, we need to rely on our partners. User education is crucial with this. Again, 90 percent of all breaches usually have human intervention. It's incumbent upon us to take that seriously from a training and from an awareness on an ongoing basis. And we need to look at that cloud, cloud security. We have two main cloud service providers now. TouchNet for processing of all student payment information, setting up payment plans, paying off tuition bills, and most recently, Blackboard. We moved from on-premise to the cloud. So thousands of courses of data is now stored in the cloud with Blackboard. And I should say, a third one now is our email system. Office 365 is now in the cloud. So we could say, boy, that's really great, I don't have to worry about that anymore. It's with the pros, it's with Microsoft, it's with Blackboard, who uses the Amazon cloud for that. It's with Microsoft for email. And while you can certainly lean on their rigor, the DOE or any other agency, much less the board, holds us, the college, accountable for the security. It's up to us to vet the cloud security. The greatest risk right now with cloud is that the bad guys now know that there's data transmission going to and from the cloud, and they're continuing to build their algorithms to find ways to crack that data transmission every single day. And so it's incumbent upon us to understand the cloud environment, what that means in terms of security, and continue to stay current with our environment, so that as we leverage cloud services, we do it in a way that's always secure to the best of our ability. So what that means is that our strategy around information security needs to be high-profile, which means it needs to be a college priority, not just an IT priority. And we need to continue to work on that. Next-gen information security systems, right? Data encryption is our main tool against moving data to and from the cloud. They are now currently building computer processors that they forecast within just a few short years will have the computing capacity to be able to crack the data encryption. So there are a lot of technology firms that are building different forms of data encryption that then can defend across what's called quad computing, and that's the next round of technology that is going to be super-fast and wonderful, but with it, it creates new avenues for malicious activity. So staying current with that is going to be really important, especially in an environment of the Internet of Things, in cloud, and so on. Identity and access management. As a college, we have, I would say, low-level, adequate but low-level identity and access management controls. We're pretty open with that, right? How often do we require password changes? What kind of authentication do you have to have when accessing certain kinds of things? So multi-factor authentication is a good example. I'm sure that you all have some services now that if you go to do some banking, oh, by the way, they're going to send you a text to validate with a dual authentication on that. We do that to a certain degree here. How much further do we need to go with that? So those kinds of things are all things that we need to do, especially with the advent of the Internet of Things, multiple devices being used. Governance over data security is a very, very important part of an overall data security structure. And then just devices, as I said, the number of devices, the kinds of devices, and how we identify those devices on campus. So when you come to campus and you come to access certain services of the college, at what point should we request identification of that device and validate that device prior to giving that user access? And so these are all things that we, as a And so these are all things that we, as a college, need to continue to work on. So data security is a really, really important area. The college has made great strides in the last couple of years. Just take this phishing attack today. From when it came in first thing in the morning, when we first became aware of it, we have an escalation process that within 20 minutes, we had closed down the link. So if you were on campus, we closed down the link so that you couldn't get to the link. And within another 45 minutes, once we knew just how broadly that this had been emailed out across campus, we had sent out an email to the campus saying, hey, just be aware that there had been a phishing attack. If you saw this, please, please don't give up. Yes?
How did you become aware of that phishing attack?
We have an email box called use@wccnet. And we ask folks to send anything that looks suspicious relating to technology. We ask you to send it there. And the campus has been really good about that. And so the moment that we got it, we have a team that is in charge of monitoring that and going through our protocols for assessment and risk mitigation and then communication. So it's a big area. We've made great strides. The board approved the new firewall. We have that mostly, and there's a two-phase process. Phase one, we did over MLK weekend. Phase two, we're going to do in our next planned maintenance window on that. So that was very, very good. And we're about to go through the next tool, which is called the SEAM tool. We're going to be able to monitor all activity on the network. So we're making great strides. But that kind of sets the boundaries, but it doesn't do all the things that you see here. So we move on to the second topic, student success and completion. So effectively using data to support student success and completion. Effectively using data. So do you have access to data? How easy is it to get access to data? Is it the right data? Can, is it helping you to make good, informed decisions around student success? So here are three good examples of Oral Roberts, enterprising integration to lower their friction for students. So what they did is, yeah, look, we looked at all the different services that for a student to do their business and do their learning at the college, we looked at all the different applications and services, technology. And it was like 30-plus. I said, man. So if a student wants to access this, do we have to have separate sign-on credentials for each and every one of them? And is it kind of like all in order? So they looked hard at that and they really put in place a rigorous, single-sign-on process. But they did it in a way that's rather secure. So they looked hard at that and said, how do we create ease of use for students to get, to gain access across all these different technology services that we're asking students to engage with? That was a big deal for them. Washington State. We do a lot of communications with students in a lot of different forums. And we know a lot about the student because they're given this information. How are we making that personal for the student, right? How do we make it personal for them? Hey, I noticed you just registered for this class. Let me link you with the advisor for this area. So if you have any questions, that we can get you there. There's, with the Internet of Things and with our systems, we have good data. We want to make it personal for you. And then University of Maryland, they really looked at their warehouse. If you look at the different, I'm going to call them data storage areas that we have, right? We have hundreds of different little pockets of data being stored. And each one of those was created for uses. And every time you're trying to solve a problem that might require data from all these different little storehouses, you have to go get data from X, Y, and Z, bring it all into a new platform, then analyze across it to help you think about that thing. And then I'm sure if you're like me, I say, I think I know what I want. So I ask for those three or four things. And I look, I say, yeah, but if I had just this one more thing, then it'd be even that much better. And then, so that process takes a long time, right? So the concept of a data warehouse is just that. It's all there. It's all identifiable and it's also relatable to one another. Identifiable and relatable. And so University of Maryland thought hard about that as a way to increase agility. Agility to help students. The right data at the right time to help the folks who are trying to help students. Agility. So that's really the rules. Area three, data-informed decision-making. Ensuring that the data reporting is relevant, convenient, and used by administrators, faculty, and students. Is relevant, convenient, and used. It takes all three, right? So you think about data and you say, well, I think I know what data is. But just take a step back. And I love this quote. It came from a presentation from another college. "Data is an enterprise asset. It's institution-wide concern with real or potential value. Through data analysis, a college might streamline its advisor schedule, better sequence its course offerings, micro-target admissions, saving money, improving service delivery, such as on-time graduation. Many functional officers are responsible for collecting, processing, storing, retrieving, and data reporting. And for its value to be fully realized, data cannot be held in silos. It must be shared across departments with little restriction as possible. For data, one of its principal costs associated with poor management is the risk of loss. What would the risk be to the success of the institution if students' data were suddenly not available, reliable, or secure?" So it's really thinking about this as a key asset of the college for everyone to use, but to be managed really well. And we'll talk a little bit more about that and what that means. Leadership. Reinforcing the role of IT as a partner. We touched on this a bit ago, right? Typically, what happens, folks have a need, they have an idea, they have a need, they reach out to IT directly. Sometimes, like at this time of the year, we really encourage folks to put it in their budget process. So in a lot of one-off ways, we hear about the needs of the college for technology. But it really isn't done in an integrated, comprehensive way, right? And so best practices would say is that we need to view IT as a partner and that they need to have a seat at the table with all the right groups that are working across. They need to be leveraged at the time that you're exploring, at the time that you're thinking about and considering, and use them as a resource to help you think through it. Be a real partner with that. And breaking down the silos for that. That could mean committees. A good example of that is that we have three or four technology committees on campus. We have an administrator-users committee. We have an academic-users committee that we just transitioned from being a standalone committee to really being part of the department chair's work under Kim Hearn's, Amna Dean's work there. We have a banner committee, just dealing with all the issues around banner. We have a web advisory committee. And we have an online technology committee. All those are all committees where it's collaborative. But if you think about those, they're still a bit of a silo, right? They're still specific to the groups that are there, but we're still not thinking broadly across the college. And so we really need to think about what that best looks like and how a best works.
How does institutional research fit into this data collection?
From a data collection standpoint, it's key. It's one of our key resources for using data. Not for the collection of data, but for the using of data in a way that's most effective for the college. So in all of these work that we're doing around the use of technologies, the IR team should have a voice in that. It really should. Yes?
I hear these committees, but are there any students that are, that could possibly sit in one of those committees from a student's standpoint of view, of how they access and, you know, is it user-friendly? Are they able to go from one screen to another without having to go back to the main screen?
As a formal process, no, that hasn't happened. When we've gone through projects, so like a good example was with the web project. When we were going through and developing the requirements of the website. We talked to a lot of different folks, but we spent a lot of time with students as well. So faculty and students spend a lot of time with those two groups here. But that's a really great point. As we start to envision the role of IT as a partner and how we bring that to life, how that's manifested, we need to think about what are the key stakeholder groups? Students certainly are front and center in that. That's a great, great point. We really have work to do around this. And it's good work. It's very important work for us. Funding. So one of the key things as we look at all the various needs is how do we, how do we develop a funding model that's sustainable? And so what that means is that we need to think about ways to be most effective with that. And sometimes that means not always doing it from within, but leveraging partners. So a good example is going to Microsoft and buying Office 365 as a cloud service, right? That, when we looked at that model, we said that was the most effective way for us to manage our email for us. The same with our LMS Blackboard as a cloud service. As we looked at the growth in the number of courses, the amount of data, the updating of all the releases, security patches with that, that was the best model for using that. The same for TouchNet. So how do we find ways, as a model, we think about ways to leverage the right balance between staffing from within, hard assets on campus versus leveraging partners that can help to provide a more robust environment for reliability, for speed, for security. And so that's what we mean about sustainable models, in doing that in the most effective way. Data management and governance, improving the management of institutional data through data standards, integration, protection, and governance. As a college, we have lots of transactions, lots of systems to transact that activity. Data storage, the board last year approved an upgrade of all of our storage capacity for housing that. But as a college, we really haven't thought about a holistic approach towards the governance of that data. And you kind of go back to the concept of an asset, an enterprise asset, right? It's an asset that you need to know where all the data is, what all the data means. So that really gets to thinking about the benefits and the risks. There's, we really need to think through the definitions of data. When you, and I've done a couple of data warehouse projects in my career. The first six months is not very much fun. It's, you pound through the definitions of data. And you say, man, I just want to build the warehouse because I want to get the data out. I know, but unless we know what that data element means, we're just going to end back in the same spot. We're all going to have our own interpretation what a credit hour means. In all circumstances of a credit hour or contact hour, so on and so forth. What's a grade mean, right? What's the definition of a grade? A progress report, on and on. Attendance. What's the definition of attendance, right? So you start thinking through all that, right? And it's really important. It's really important work that has to be done. You have to have responsibilities. Who are the data custodians? Who are the stewards? Meaning, who are the ones who are really, who are the experts on the data? Who control the transactions that create the data for that? Structured and unstructured data. We have a lot of data sitting in Excel spreadsheets all across campus, right? I ran this report, ran this report, ran this report. I put them all together. I got rid of the stuff I didn't want. Ah, now I have the report and I love this report. And where do I store it? I store it. I might store it on a network drive. I might store it on my hard drive. I might store it on my thumb drive, right? It's not structured data. And yet, I might use it to report to the board. Should I have? I mean, should I have used that unstructured data? Because it's my interpretation of taking data from three different systems, put it together to create something that I thought was useful to present to the board. So it's that governance around data that's really important. So that when we reference something, that those that are using the data, in this case, the board, for instance, that you know what it means. There's no doubt about what it means. We're doing something with it. So spend time in that. You know, capacity for analytics. We want to get to that more and more so, start to use the data. So what are the risks that if we don't put management and governance in place? Is that you don't have the certainty around operations. It's just not as efficient. You're struggling with, well, I thought this data said this and you thought it meant that. We both were given the same task and we have two different numbers for the same data requests. Which one's right? You spent a lot of time cleaning that up. You shouldn't have to. Security, as we mentioned. Compliance failure, right? There's a lot of new laws that have been put in place over the last few years. With those laws come compliance. And we want to make sure that we're fully compliant. And last but not least is risk of audits and not doing well in audits. So there's really some strong needs. And so, I mean, governance, really, you have custodians of the data. You have stewards of the data. You have users, you have information, and then you have metrics. We're all wanting to use the data. And that metrics role is across the college. It's not any one person. It's everybody that's using it. And so governance is integrated, it's complex, and it must be managed for that. And that's something that's important. So when we talk about compliance, I pulled out a few of the select slides in one of the presentations that was in the pre-reading. And this came from the DOE in a presentation that they gave at the Federal Student Aid Conference. And it talks about what are those requirements? That we must have the GLBA, the Graham-Leach-Blythe Act safeguards. And those safeguards are very rigorous. In one of the articles, I actually provided an appendix. And it was an appendix of just, it was a matrix. It went on for page and page and page of controls, right? Data controls. And it showed how you have to assess every data element under all these different control structures. These regulations ask us to assess that and close the gaps around that each and every day. And that's really kind of at the heart of those controls. And it's also asking you to identify reasonably foreseeable internal and external risks and to do things about it through training, through our systems, through detection preventative measures that we have. And then to control those risks. That we have to have custodians for that security operation. And then we have to do evaluations around that. And then last but not least, just recently, within the last three or four months, it's now become a requirement that when our external auditors come in, they do two different audits for us. They do a financial audit and they do what's called the single audit. And it's looking at all the activities around federal looking at all the activities around federal funds. And now they've added to that single audit requirement and assessment by the external auditors to assess the higher advocacy institutions' compliance with these regulations, including, have you done your assessment around the GLBA? Do you know where your gaps are? Do you have a plan to close those gaps? And are you sticking on plan? You don't have to have it all done on day one, but you have to get after the business of doing that. In some, in some of the materials that I included, there was something called NIST, NIST 800-171. NIST is one framework that is acceptable for compliance with the GLBA. It's not the only framework, but all of them have the same basic principles to them, right? Some are just a little bit more rigorous than others. So the NIST framework that is one that we believe is best for the college because whether we have to comply technically with NIST today, we believe eventually that NIST will be the one and only standard. And so that's the one that we, that we will take on as part of this. So when you move beyond, beyond that affordability, so this really comes down to is that with every area of the college, and IT technology is no different, that we need to have a prioritization process of our IT investments. That really is putting it in the context of where the demands are and where there's limited resources to be able to support those demands. And so you really can bring, and technology can be a wonderful tool for that, to help meet those demands. But having a prioritization process around that is really, is really important. We could spend, as we could in deferred maintenance and go across the campus, millions and millions of dollars of new technology projects every year, right? That's not realistic. And so we need to be smart about that. We need to have ways of thinking about the best ways to prioritize that. And that's all about affordability. A big threshold issue for us is sustainable staffing, you know, ensuring adequate staffing, capacity and staff retention. This is a big thing. We, you know, we have four open IT positions currently. We have been trying really, really hard to fill them. We've had to turn to contract hire firms as a way to start getting those fills, as a way, we're starting kind of learning the labor market as it relates to technology and what we're finding because the technology professionals are such high demand that more times than not, they don't want to do direct hires. They really want to have the flexibility, if they so choose, to go work with WCC for a year or two, and then go off to the next step in their, in their career. And so there's a lot of technology contract to hire firms to help to facilitate that. But whether we go that model, or we direct hire, or we go hire a staff person just for a project for three or four months as a contract hire for that, it doesn't matter. The job is, within IT, is to deal with the reality of strong competition for qualified technology professionals and to be plugged into all those resources so we can create a sustainable model. And that's becoming more and more of a challenge for us. Not just us, across the country. Certainly here in southeast Michigan is no exception for that. I love this because we think about what we know today. But what this quote comes from, a CIO from the University of Oxford, is that some people consider the cloud to be a panacea that will allow us to massively reduce costs, notably in staff. But we're now seeing instead of this is the emergence of course skills needed internally to manage this cloud service. So as we leverage other services, whether it be the Microsoft Cloud or the Amazon Cloud, it's incumbent upon us to have the expertise to manage that. It creates a whole nother set of integrations, a whole nother set of security, and a whole nother set of opportunities to leverage that cloud environment, which creates a whole nother set of skill sets in technology that we need to be thinking about as we think about a sustainable staffing model. It's fast-moving, it's fun, it's energizing, but it's not without its challenges. Next-gen enterprise IT. So, you know, if we think about our main ERP systems, and I'll switch to this slide, this slide here for a minute. If you think, think about the enterprise systems that we have, our course management systems, our curriculum management systems, our student information systems, Banner, our financial information, Banner, human resource systems is a combination of two or three systems, including Banner, facilities information systems, Famous, and all the HVAC systems that go with that, our library information systems, CIRC, and so on. And our customer, our student relationship systems, our EMIS systems. These are all big, broad platforms that were intended to solve and meet a number of needs in specific areas. Now I'll go back to the prior slide. So this is, and I also offered a copy, if you look at those college-wide IT enterprise systems, enroll management systems, student success systems, advancement, and then below that, there's all these different, not specific, but more narrow groupings of services that, in many cases, we have a lot of these things. Not all of them, but many of them, right? And so we probably have thirty, good, strong thirty different significant software applications that kind of fit in this view. This, this view here, plus those that are here, right? The issue is, is that many of those systems are dated, ten to fifteen years. And they were fine at the time. But in this world of the Internet of Things, and the demands that our students and our faculty have on the ways that they want to engage in the learning process, and the ways that we want to help students to be successful, being able to meet and leverage those tools with systems that are ten to fifteen years old is very, very hard. So the way that we do it today is create a whole bunch of data integrations between these leading-edge systems that are out there today, many of which are back here, and what I would call to be our dated systems, which many of these are here, right? And these data integrations, all they do is give you limited value of the new systems. Because these are our systems of record. This is where we go for all our data, when we think back on a data warehouse concept, right? And data governance. This is where we go. So we're taking all these leading-edge systems that are evolving each and every day through the Internet of the Things, and we're taking that data back where it's relevant, back to old systems. We're leaving a lot of data on the table that's useful for our students and our faculty and the college at large. And we have a lot of work that goes on in those integrations. Building the integrations, maintaining those integrations. And it gets even a little tougher when we deal with this. This is a quote from a CIO at Portland State, that we spend a lot of time modifying, they're talking about modifying the code of these ERP systems. And I would move heaven and earth to get back to baseline, right? What comes out of the box with those things. I don't need to distinguish ourselves because of our HR system. You could plug in our financial systems. You could plug in our time key systems, our HVAC systems. What most institutions do, and WCC is no exception, we've taken our ERP systems, in many cases, we've written custom code. Why? Because it wasn't giving us everything that we needed. And so we need it more. We've got a great IT team. We can write some custom code. But with that code comes a lot of legacy costs, right? To maintain that code, and especially when you think about, this is, this is where we are, and this is just pales in comparison if I was to overlay the Internet of Things on top of this picture here of all the various systems. And so we really need to think hard about what's the next generation of IT systems that the college needs to go after. At what point in time have we hit the law of diminishing returns about staying with our ERP systems? So we will, we are going to work hard on that and think hard about what that is. And then lastly, digital transformation, collaborating with faculty and academic leadership to apply technology to teaching and learning in ways that reflect the innovations in pedagogy and institutional mission. Right? So thinking about, from an IT point of view, what information, what systems, what IT environment, many times it's just an environment, the right kind of environment, the right kind of classroom setting that it is, that really helps to enable our faculty to do this work as they continue to push that edge of learning and the use of technology within that learning. There's a quote that I think is just spot on. An institution must be pursuing innovation in all of the individual systems. Just think of systems even down to a faculty member's got some wonderful technology they want to use for one class as part of a, as part of an exercise. Of these individual systems so that when orchestrated together, they result in transformation that is strategic and institutional in scope and impact. That integration needs to be thought about broadly and deeply. And we need to have a technology environment that supports that. This is a good picture because it kind of shows the evolution of kind of where we are. It starts in the upper left with the classroom of today, electronic paper screens and tablets and data projectors. And this is back from 2012 to what we're evolving to. The studios with gamification and achievements and badges and so on, to the virtual environment where really that you're not bound by physical space, you're not bound by geography for learning. And then the disaggregation of that so that you have a digitized classroom. This is all evolving. We have faculty using this and wanting to use this. And we want to keep continuing to help to support that learning environment. We need to have a technology environment that can anticipate this need and not be an obstacle for what needs to happen. So what is the WCC response to all this? There's a number of areas that we as a college, and this is in addition to all the good work that we're doing right now. We have a long list of projects that our IT department in partner with all of our key stakeholders and faculty and administration are doing. Is we need to continue to build out our information so for the environment. We need to look at governance. We need to think about our technology governance. How do we prioritize projects? How do we manage projects, right? How do we, how do we invoke change management within our technologies? That very controlled environment. The regulatory issues, user awareness, faculty technology planning, classroom technology planning, ADA technology enhancements. It's becoming really, really high in our focus. The technology integration, we talked about that integration being key. Starting to integrate it with the Internet of Things in a meaningful way that helps to support all the initiatives that are going on. What about data reporting? As we have more and more devices, more and more data, being able to understand what that means and anticipate needs that we're going to have across campus. What does that mean to our network? The capacity of our network, security of our network? How do we leverage cloud computing? And last but not least is staff support all this. We're in a massive amount of change in technology use and processes, the way that you invoke technology. And what are we doing from a college to invest in our IT staff here today to help with this? That's the end of my presentation.
Wow, that's a lot. Questions? Yes, trustee?
So Washoe Community College has software and systems that are ten to fifteen years old, I hear you say. How does, how does the college compare to its peers in Michigan or in the country?
I think most schools in terms of their main enterprise system, which is, for us is Banner, for some schools it's Cali, for some schools it's Genza Bar. But they're all, they're all ten to fifteen years old, if not twenty years old. Many schools like us are grappling with this issue. And there's a number of institutions like Workday, I'm sure you've all heard of Workday, they have built a brand-new architecture that leverages the latest technologies and integrates a lot of the applications. A big basket of those thirty applications said, I think we can take twenty of them right off the table and put them in one new platform, right? As one example. There are other institutions doing that. So we have done some deep studies on it, on those platforms. And we think at some point in our future, it might be right, it's just not right yet. In large part because we're not ready for that. To tackle those kinds of master projects, this capacity building that are on this list here, we really need to have all that in order first, or at least well on its way, before we really can tackle a major enterprise system like that.
Any other questions? Wow, this is a lot to take in. I, my only question and concern is, this is a lot, and I know we're looking at, what is it, Campus Works, to come in, and I know you're going to talk about that too. But my, I just have a concern is, of the length of time and the training for, for the faculty, for them to get used to this because it's going to be a changeover, and for them to realize that what they have been doing, they're not going to be able to do that anymore. So, you know, that's a learning curve there. And I'm just throwing this out. I see, Dr. Hearn's looking at me too. But it is, it is a learning curve because you're talking about a whole different type of construct for the system, for this institution, that they're going to have to utilize every day. And how soon do they start? What is the type of training that's going to be done for them? And how long will this training will be? What's going to happen to ones who don't really come, you know, pick up their speed in doing what is needed to be done so the system can work appropriately? So that's just some of my concerns. Yes, trustee?
I guess my concern, I share that concern as well. But I also am concerned with the aspect of governance. In other words, who decides what data and who decides how to use it is really very important. And the stakeholders for governance of data need to include a lot of different people. Because that can be quite, I don't know, authoritarian if only certain people have access to the, I know how difficult it has been in the past for faculty to get data from institutional research. We don't give data to faculty. Well, you know, who needs it? Who uses it? And what data do you collect? It's very important questions that need to be addressed before we switch over to something.
Yeah, I would agree with that sentiment that it's really important in any kind of assessment to get all the stakeholders in as early as you can stand it. Because the sooner you get that buy-in, the better any transition Because the sooner you get that buy-in, the better any transition will be. And as well as include your high-level admins. And you made a comment earlier about getting your admins in on these high-level planning meetings is important. I have firsthand experience about how, you know, a high-level decision was made to make a change. And if they had just asked me, I could have said, oh, that's not compatible with system B. Why didn't you ask me? This isn't going to work. So, getting your sysadmins in there is really important because you talked about a lot of integrations. Yeah, managing those integrations is so difficult and, yeah, trying to transition everything and get it right. You know, I've, I've made some pretty big mistakes because it, certain dependencies weren't documented. You know, it's huge. So, I agree.
That, that governance part is so important, meaning that it be done well and done with the right level of inclusion. The good news is, a lot of higher-ed institutions have already gone through that process. There are some great best practices out, out there on this. Real-life examples how it works well. And the stumbling blocks along the way, and we need to embrace that.
Yeah. If we can, if we can piggyback off of what they've done and, you know, and their successes, that would be great.
Yep.
Well, I thought this was a very good report. Thank you so much. This is very, very good.
Can I get a PhD for this one?
Yes, I'm telling you, it's very in-depth. Yes, thank you. Any other questions? We'll move on. Okay, the next one is, just reports, muscle reports. The first one is tab B, personnel recommendations. Does anyone have any questions regarding? Yes.
Always do.
Trustee Hatcher.
Are we any closer to knowing the number of part-time instructors that we have?
The number of part-time instructors for the current semester?
For any, for the semester or last semester?
We can find out.
I mean, I asked that last month and, you know, I'm just curious as to how that's going.
Specific for all part-time instructors or just? Remember, we're talking about the English department?
No, no, the English department.
Just all part-time?
All part-time.
And in February is when we usually get, I, I asked for it, I don't know if anybody else wants it, but the executive organizational chart revised is a, it's a good time to get that out to everybody. I have a question. Lydia, WILSEC is replacing whom? Under finance and information, IT? There's a new person, Lydia, who is a replacement for someone?
So, this is, we, we had hired a person about two months ago. And I don't remember her name, sorry. And she did not work out.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, all right, I thought that was the case. Then there's all the part-time, new part-timers. There's a, how many, Adult Transitions has a student success coach, which I think is kind of a nifty thing we might think about for other areas. And I noticed the turnover, particular turnover in the student and academic services, one year, two years. It's probably the same problem that you might be having in IT, I don't know.
In financial aid especially, yes.
Yeah, it's difficult. It's difficult to find people who are able to do that. So, that's, those are my questions.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
We go to tab C, financial reports. Vice President Johnson?
Great, thank you. So, the financial report, this will be for the six months ended December. As you, as you can see is that we have surplus the budget of about 3.7 million, about 1.4, that is on the revenue side, which half is in the tuition and fee side. Is, we are holding our own, we're doing well for winter. We are right on budget for winter, which is great. And of course, we have the benefit of being slightly above budget for fall for that. We also, our property tax revenue is trending higher than the original budget. That in, in large part was due to the assessed values actually came in a little bit higher than what we had originally thought when we had set, set the budget. And the refunds for protesting assessed values is forecasted to be lower. So, that's a positive trend. I just make a point on state appropriations, that's, that includes the normal state appropriations that we get each year as set in budget. It also includes the monies for the make-whole provision of when the personal property tax revenue was lost and there was a separate revenue mechanism that, that was created that included two pieces, kind of the absolute make-whole. And then to the extent the mechanism actually collected more money than the, than the base make-whole, that excess is also just, also attributed back. And so, our excess that we forecasted came in slightly more than what we, we had originally thought. So, that's good news for us there. So, revenue is very strong at 1.4 million. And then on the cost side, that our expenditures are about 2, 2 million below budget. And that's about split evenly between personnel and non-personnel. And the personnel side, we continue to trend with our vacancies, average vacancies being around 32, 33, 34, right in there. And we were budgeting around 20. So, that difference, which manifests itself in all the line items, is a positive variance that I would say is permanent as it relates to, to what has already occurred. And on the non-personnel side, much of that is timing, that million of better than budget. Because when we talk to departments, they still have plans to spend a fair amount of that. So, that's, that's 2, 2 million. But you'll notice a new line item down under the health and fitness center, a positive variance on page two, towards the bottom of 350,000. And so, these are basically the college bringing back into the general fund, the, I call them the prior-year scraps of what we had budgeted as being the amount of surplus that the fitness center would generate to pay for debt expense and for deferred maintenance and what actually happened. So, this, so this year, we kind of pulled in those scraps. And that's the 350,000 for that. So, like prior months, the college continues to perform well relative to budget. And it really sets the backdrop for a discussion that we'll have with the board within the next couple of months around a proposed mid, mid-year adjustment potentially to help fund capital projects that, that are on the horizon.
Okay. Any questions? Yes.
I did notice the good news in terms of increased enrollment in occupational programs. I thought that was, that's always something we look for. Is it typical of other community colleges to use the vacancy and personnel as a, as a savings variance? Is that what everyone does or just us?
It's, I, I think every institution has to have a budgeting approach towards the amount of vacancy savings that are, that are going to, to be there. The way, the way that, that we do it here is to set each department's budget, assuming that year that every single position will be filled 100% of the year.
Right.
And then at the college level, we make some broad-based assumption. I think every institution does, does that in some method.
Okay.
This is one that I felt was cleanest for us to, as a college, to know, so what do we assume and how are we doing against that assumption? It's, it's a much cleaner way for us to be able to track that as a college.
It's, it's, we can see. My other question is, do we know what the payroll tax for the MSFRS refund is going to look like?
We, it's, it's going to be around 175,000.
Oh, okay.
And, and we booked an accrual for 200,000 prior to when we got the file from, from ORS.
Thank you.
Yep, on that.
Any other questions?
I move approval. Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
So, we go down to facilities.
Very good.
It has you here.
I am the interim deputy. And that's, so, the interim deputy. So, I'll begin giving the report. I think I just want to point out a couple of things here. On page, on page one is that we, that we have awarded the contract for the initial, the initial design work for the advanced transportation center. And we are in the process now of starting that design work. It's important we get that done as a college and get that to the state by the first part of April. So, the state can then vet that design. And if it's acceptable to them, they then will then pass it off to step two, which is for capital outlay approval for the upcoming budget year. So, we're on a, on a track for getting that done. And then the second, I guess I would say, major project that, that we have going on the top of page two, item T2, has pretty significant impact to the college, right? We, we have closed down this, the second floor of BE. We relocated all the faculty and staff that were up there so that we could do the very significant work of the fan terminal units on the second floor. When, when, when we're done with that work, which is scheduled for the end, the end of July, we will then, we have to go down to the first floor and, and do that as well. So, that's a really big project. And then also just to point out on page three, that item three, under campus repair and maintenance, the nursing SIM lab, we are on target. We have, we met with Dean Greaves and VPI Hearn's. And we have the design specs that we need. We, we have engaged a firm to do that work. And we are going to have that new SAM lab up and going for fall semester for that. And that's, and that's what we put.
Questions?
Yes.
Do we have lactation rooms in other buildings?
I don't know the answer to that.
Not yet, not yet.
Coming?
Not in every building.
Yes.
Good.
We're trying to figure that out.
Okay, good.
Especially in the TI building with the nurses.
Well, I think it's an important thing to do, yeah.
And these will be, there'll be a notice like lactation room or how will be labeled, signage?
It'll, that's the only thing it'll be used for. It'll just be a sign that says lactation room.
Okay. I mean, I, I didn't know what you would call it other than that, but just want to make sure. So, so if I'm in the building and I need a nurse, I would know where to go.
Right. Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically. That's, that's where I'm getting to, so somebody don't have to wander around trying to figure it out. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to remarks, remarks from Board of Trustees. Any remarks? Yes.
As many of you know, the North American International Auto Show is in progress in Cobal Hall in downtown Detroit. A week ago Sunday, Washtau Community College was the only community college to be an exhibitor at the auto show. And there are a number of faces around the room of others that were there. I was there Sunday afternoon. President Belanca was there. Washtau Community College developed in a couple of weeks' time, a small autonomous vehicle about the size of a go-kart that had operating LiDAR and radar and motion detectors showing the public then and all this week during public days at the auto show, the kind of capabilities that our students have and that we have here in our classrooms. And I think it was a proud moment for us and I was glad that we were associated with all the technology that was on the floor down there. Nice work.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to add to what David Patrick said about the memo to everyone from Mr. Veltre about the MSFRS. It was very clear, very timely, and information is always good. So, thanks very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, I too did go to the auto show. I went Sunday to hear the panel of Dr. Belanca, Kelly, I think that was her name. She is a student here and has been, and she's gotten several certificates and awards. And she's also interned or has been interned, I can't remember, at Toyota. And she's been doing excellent jobs there. They really like her a lot. And another gentleman, I don't remember his name.
Glenn Stevens from Mish Auto.
From Mish Auto. And surprisingly, there was a lot of people that were sitting in the little section that we're at, but people were walking around and they stopped. I'm talking about young and older people. And it was really interesting because they, they got wrapped up in what Kelly was saying and Rose and Glenn. And it really showed that there, first of all, in that section, we were at the lower level of Cobal, which is humongous, that whole floor, that whole floor space, that whole section was filled with people and constantly coming in, coming in and going out. And I did see the, the go-kart. It was, it's really, really fascinating to see this and how they built it. Two students were there, explained it to me, what was going on and how they built it and yada, yada. And so, anyway, it was a very good experience. And I'm quite sure the people who were there felt the same way, just seeing all of these autonomous vehicles from different manufacturers and companies, like, you know, auto companies. And I saw this beautiful Escalade Navigator, I can't remember that, it was sitting outside. And if you take your, your phone, your, you know, your cellphone and put it on the bumper, no, what is that, front, yeah, the front part, I don't know what you call it.
The hood?
Not the hood on the side. Is that the bumper?
Fender.
Fender, thank you. And you put it on there, it can tell you, it tells you that you've been hit or you're going to be hit. And I mean, it just tells you all this information. And it was so fascinating to see what was going on. And if your car did get hit, this light comes out and it, and it tells you that you've been hit, the severity of the hitness and what needs to be done. I was like, okay.
Does it tell you who hit you?
Well, that would be nice. Well, wait a minute, it can give you the information.
It says Bose constant.
It can give you the, no kidding, the guy. The, the person who was standing there said, it can tell, give you the information, the vehicle and, and whatever their VIN number is. That's how, how it can, it transmit all this information to you. So, it was really, and then I, you know, after it ended, I walked around for a few more hours and, and I couldn't believe it because I told my daughter when I got home, I said, must have been 100,000, over 100,000 people there. And sure enough, on the news it said, it was over 100,000 people. It was so, and this was on Sunday.
Saturday.
Saturday, excuse me, on Saturday. It was just, you couldn't walk. And then they had a, a high school band coming through playing and there was people with those big, the big heads that's in the Thanksgiving parade. And I'm like, oh my God, this, I mean, you couldn't walk. It was shoulder to shoulder and cheek to cheek. That's all I can say, but it was fascinating. It was a lot of fun. Got tired and I left finally. But anyway, it was very good. That, that panel was excellent. They did a very good job, especially Kelly. She, she has learned a lot. She attributes a lot to her education and her growth mentally and physically from the school and her instructors. That's all she kept talking about. That's all she kept talking about, how well she really appreciated the instructors that worked here, the faculty. I have nothing else to say. Okay. All right, now, the president's remarks.
Well, um, thank you, I'd like to pick up on Kelly and her parents. The student was an amazing student, and she was very articulate, spoke in this panel discussion we had about her experience at Toyota, and also how the college provided her a pathway, you know, it's stackable credentials to take her first internship, and then after that internship, to apply for her second, her next internship, of which she's working. But the amazing thing about Kelly, and she's the person there in the middle, is that, um, she is now, uh, she's got her three years done, and she's applied to Ferris to get her management degree, automotive management degree online. But her parents and Kelly attribute her success to the faculty. And they said that they had never, you know, that the faculty members that she had gave her the support that she needed throughout her classes. When she had difficulty, they talked about one was a break job, I guess, that, how the faculty member there worked with her to make sure she was, you know, being an attractive woman, I don't know, can I say that? You know, she mentioned the fact that, you know, no one ever, um, she felt very good that people treated her as an equal. And, um, so I'm very proud also, I'm very proud of this college, uh, the faculty, the administrators that have worked on this, and the marketing people that helped us get there. So, thank you so much. Also, just very, uh, very quickly, we got another award. And this was an award at Ann Arbor Garden Award, and I'm going all over the place, so whoever's doing this, I apologize. So what happened here is, uh, just a resident, right, from the garden club, Ann Arbor Garden Club read through, on the record, about all the awards we've been receiving in terms of our grounds, and so they gave us an award too. So we received this, uh, Ann Arbor Garden Club. It says, "Thank you to Rose, Board of Trustees, and all the employees, your good work is noticed." Uh, the Ann Arbor Garden Club. So, thank you, that was very nice. And, uh, we also are one, and I, I know you're gonna ask me, which one are we? I don't know, do you know? We are one of the top hundred producers of associate degrees in, uh, two thousand and seventeen by diverse issues in higher education. I'll let you know which, which one we are in that. Other than that, uh, we have a great Martin Luther King celebration. Thank you, Trustee McKnight Morton, for being there, it was really great. Our faculty band, um, performed, we had a lot of students there, uh, it was really built. And of course, Professor Perkins did an outstanding job. And we had the, um, Council on Future Mobility. So if there's anybody we would want here to see what we do in mobility, it's the council that's appointed by the governor on future mobility. So the Council for Future Mobility was here last week. Brandon gave them a tour of our center. They were, I, they couldn't be, I think we're speechless, quite frankly. So, uh, thank you, I wanna thank the trustees for your support in getting this vision to become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And congratulations.
No, thank you.
That's great.
Okay, um, we're going to new business and discussions. Technology Services Contract, Tab E, yes, uh, VP Johnson again. I guess you're gonna be up for a while.
For just a couple of items.
Okay.
So we, um, we, we, uh, had done a deep assessment with the benefit of Campus Works, who had done the original assessment that the board had authorized, along with the work, um, that we've done to prepare for tonight's special report, and thought long and hard about all the capacity building that we have to do as an institution to, um, to be a strong partner across the college for technology. And you start to think about all the good work that our IT team does, which is so significant. And they really have a customer service focus. We've had a foundation that has served us really, really well. And I think what we've seen over the past year and as we forecast into the future is that, um, for us to continue to hold that level of excellence in the way that we serve the campus, that we've gotta do some, some serious capacity building. And so we, we wrote an RFP, we thought hard about different models of ways that we, we could get after that capacity building. And one of them was to kinda build out for ourselves the staffing, um, to, to be able to, to do that. And then the second was that I said, let's run an RFP and, and, and see if there isn't a service provider that we thought would be a good fit for us to help with that. And that RFP, as, as listed on, on, on page two of the memo, really identified on all the things on top of what we're already doing. So the security initiatives, we're doing some, and those are great. But as you saw from the, the presentation tonight, there really is a lot more that has to be done in, in, in short order. Banner nine, we, we and most institutions across the nation that are Illution Banner schools are, are struggling greatly, um, with the new Banner nine releases and how to best leverage that, uh, and the technologies that are there. And Illution's not been a good partner with that. But with that being said, we've gotta do it, we gotta figure that out, right? And so we know we need extra help, whether we hire that directly, which is really hard to find, that specialized niche, or we go find it from the out, the outside. NIST assessment, we talked, we talked about regulatory compliance and the rigor that comes with that. And now with the new audit requirements, how do we do that in, in, in the near term? And how do we build out a plan and get going to close all those gaps? Every institution's gonna have gaps, we're not gonna be any exception to, to, to that. Data governance, we, we talked about that. Our network, the optimization of our network, the Internet of Things and all the things that are going on campus, security, access, all that stuff, the optimization. Reporting systems. I mean, I, there isn't a day that goes by that we don't get a request in IT and I don't get an email saying, "Hey Bill, do you have somebody that could help us get data around this?" Could you write a report to do that for us, right? And so it just got to a point where you know the campus is ready, right? That, that, that the number of requests that we get for information to help P, P people way outweighs the capacity. We need to build a toolset that allows folks to self-serve them, themselves around, around this, this data. Project management. Within IT, the rigors of project management has, I'm gonna say has not been our forte, it hasn't had to been our forte. We've had time, we've had resources, and we haven't had the number of projects. But if you just look at the projects that are on the, on the first page, that are on our plate this year, and we had a long list last year, we've done more within IT in the last two years than, than, than I think we've done in a long, long time. And that's, kudos to our IT team, kudos to the campus, the key business partners willing to go along for that ride. But the fact is, without project management, we're not gonna do those well. And we need to have that, we need to build that PMO office. And I think that office would extend beyond I, IT, frankly, as, as we think about our processes. And speaking towards that, we do need to develop standards and processes for implementation. And last but not least is that around our new website. We were working really hard in this, this coming year that we're gonna launch our new website. But that's based upon a vision and, and architecture that holds to that vision. And the hardest thing about building a new website is the day that it goes live, somebody says, "Hey, can you just, can you just put this in this new website?" And you say, "I could, I, sure I could." But now you've just alluded that student experience that we work so hard, because if I bolt on this one thing, right, I've lost that whole vision. So creating governance that meets the business need, meets the college need, yet doesn't in a way that preserves that architecture, preserves that student experience that we so desperately need to have. So, building all those things, we said, we, we don't have five years to get this done. We really need, in two years, seeing what's on the horizon, we really need to get this all up and going and not lose one iota of pace around all the projects that are on our plates today. So that's the spirit that we wrote the, uh, the, our, the RFP. And we got three, three, three bids on it. Really only two were credible bids. One from Avalon was, uh, they, they just, they partnered with an outside, a contracting firm. They really didn't buy into our vision, they said, "Yeah, if you need some staff, we can get you some staff." That's what Avalon said. And their price was way out of the world. There, there, there was a second bid, um, from Dynamic Campus that had come in. They, they got part of our vision around it, but they said, "You know what, we've got some good folks that are on our team that we think could be there, and we'll only commit to them for six months." And that's it, because we've got other projects. Well, we know six months, what's the point? Six months for these projects just isn't gonna get us there. And so Campus Works of the three, they, they got all the elements. They were competitive on price relative to the others. They strongly understood the vision, they actually laid out, uh, kind of a strong plan of work for it. And thirdly, um, they had a strong resource base for all the areas. And so the areas that we thought we needed to have help with is CIO, it's time, it's time. We've been working without a CIO, and that's, that's, that suited us fine for the moment. We've made great progress, but to take the next step, we need to have a CIO. We need a CISO, Chief Information, uh, Security Officer, we need that. It's time for all, for all the reasons we saw here today. And there are a whole bunch of other areas around data governance, um, around project management, around change management, around security, around NIST standard com, com, compliance, around Banner nine implementation, that we knew we were gonna have to have these subject matter experts, these SMEs. And so we, we wanted to see, versus us hiring it ourselves, which could be possible, I guess in theory, although it's a pretty tough market to hire these technology professionals, but in theory, um, we could hire it ourselves, but we wanted to see if we could find a firm that, that could provide for two years for us, full-time, on-campus, CIO, CISO, along with a deep bench of professionals within their organization that could address all these other specialized capacity building areas, the ones that I just mentioned. None of that work goes to the list of work that's on our docket today, right? And it's deep, except for maybe Banner nine, right? It's all additive to what, to what we, we were doing. And so Campus Works, we, we felt of the three firms was by far the best firm. But then we said, "Let's step back and say, what if we were to build it ourselves?" And I tried to pro, pro, provide for the board what that might look, look like. If we were to hire a CIO and, and CISO, uh, in, in this market with, with benefits over two years, you, you, you can see my, my best guess of what that would cost, uh, for that, about nine hundred and six sixty thousand. And then I said, "If we were to go hire a NIST com, com, compliance expert, Banner nine resources, data governance, prod, pro, project management." And I tempered those, given the duration, as to how long I think we might need them. Not, in many cases, it wasn't for the full two years, it was just for a year. And that's if, whether we hired them directly, hire, or hired them as a contractor ourselves, just as a standard. And I, and what, and what, and what we were trying to prove, if all those resources were available and we could hire them on day one, how does that compare to the price that we got from Campus Works? Both for the CIO, the CISO, along with my best guess of the SME time that we would need. And my best guess was around eight, eight hundred hours of specialized XX expertise that would come in. And the reason why it wouldn't be as many hours if we were just to hire full-time people here is that we're hiring a CIO and a CISO as a service, that they have deep higher education experience, they have deep access to bench, where they pick up a phone and say, "I don't want you for, for three weeks, I, I, I need the answer to this specific question." Right? The CIO and the CISO have access to that bench knowledge at no charge to us, it's part of what we're hiring. If we need to then go launch a project, say, around NIST compliance, we, we, we would dip into their bench, we would bring them in to do that defined project, and then we, we would then integrate that within our current IT team. That's part of the process, is you bring in the expert, you launch the project along with our team, and then you're handing the baton off to our team, uh, as, as a result of that. And so we, we felt when we looked at it from a cost standpoint, that there, if anything, there's a slight advantage. And I, and I'm just guessing, right, as, as to the exact cost, in, in, in both, in both of these cases, it's not an exact science. I'm making a bunch of assumptions, admittedly. But, but that told, 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 told me, in both models, it really wasn't much of a difference in price. If anything, there might be a slight advantage. But what you really gain going with the Technology Services Contract is that on day one, that we have a CIO and CISO here, on day one. We interviewed, um, their candidates for CIO and CIS, uh, SO. The IT team really liked the candidates that, that, that they offered for those services. Felt like they would be the right fit for our team to help us get over a two, a two-year period. So we gained that on day one. On day one, we gained this bench of SMEs so that as we start to launch these projects, and really the role for the technology services firm is not to manage the day-to-day. I'm not interested in that. What I'm interested in is going from here to here in capacity building of IT. Now, to, to do that capacity building, that you do need to take into account the day-to-day stuff, right? Because it's, those are not done in isolation, they're done in an integrated way. But it is, it's really purely additive in, in fast pace to invest in our IT team and to put our college in a two-year period in a profoundly better place than what we could do, um, by doing it ourselves. Just to hire a CIO, as we've seen from other leading, or just to hire a CISO, is not a one-month venture. That's months and months.
We tried.
If, if, if and when we are successful. To find these experts in NIST and Banner nine, we, we ran an RFP for Banner nine ex, expertise. The best firm that we got, in my opinion, did a lousy job. And the reason is, there aren't many folks who know Banner nine. There's a few. Campus Works has a couple, they've actually done some implementations with, with higher ed institutions in Banner nine, that they've said that they would commit to our college to help, to help, help, help us get, get down that path. So we, we looked at it and we, we felt that it was by far the superior next step in the evolution of, of, of the investment in our IT team, in our campus for that. How do we fund that, right? It's a, it's a million six, that's the request, an amount not to exceed, with my best guess of hours around the, the, the SMEs as you, as, as you, you see there. Of that million six, about a million of it is funded through our current IT organization. Through projects that we have each and every year, we're prioritizing projects within IT. And we, and, and we would make this the next set of priority projects within IT. So over the two years, that's a million out of the million six. So that leaves us about six hundred thousand. And that six hundred thousand roughly equates to the cost of a CIO for two. And that $600,000 roughly equates to the cost of a CIO for two years. And frankly, that's something that I would have put in our budget for IT for this upcoming year. I would have said, "It's time, Rose. It's time that the college have a say. We're ready for that." As an IT organization, we're ready to really leverage the value of a CIO. And I would have put that in the budget, and we would have put that high up in the priority list, I believe, as a college, of things that we needed to fund. So, I feel like that this million six is within our budgeted resources as we now have them, and that small amount that actually we would have asked for.
Questions? Yes.
Is it your expectation that if we retain Campus Works, that the CIO and the CISO will be individuals that will be here for 24 months? Are people going to revolve through Philigmos roles?
Yeah, no, they have committed, and we vetted that strongly. They have committed in both cases that they will be here for 24 months, here each week, full-time.
Same name, same face.
The same name, same face. Now, like with anything, right? I mean, we always take risks of employees leaving the firm, but the firm has committed that they will commit those resources for two years for us, unless they were to leave that firm, Campus Works in this case.
Thank you.
Yes, Ruth.
I have two questions. The first one is, do we have a plan for year three?
So, year three, the college needs to have a permanent CIO. So, and part of what we would do is to leverage Campus Works and their expertise.
To help us find.
To help us with that.
And a CISO.
And also, thank you, Rose, you have CISO as well.
The other concern I have is that this that you gave us, right, has their assessment report.
Yes.
Of the college. And as I read it, I went through their daily meeting schedule.
Yes.
Of who they met with and what they talked about. And I was sorry to see that there was no meetings with faculty. They met with two librarians, they had an open session for faculty to drop in, but as relates to my question about governance. If we have this attitude that an assessment report about IT doesn't involve faculty, then I think we're already in trouble. And I would like attention to be paid to that.
I will say that we did have, and it's in, it would be very easy to miss, we had a meeting, a dedicated meeting with all the department chairs.
Yes.
So, there.
But you met with every single department on campus, and very little time spent with faculty.
So, we.
So, I would like some attention to be paid for that with them, because that's a stakeholder that needs to be involved, and isn't at this point. From their assessment.
We met with 29 faculty, and then we have a separate walk-in session.
Yeah, I saw the walk-in session.
And then we also met with professional counselors, too.
Yes.
So.
But it doesn't compare with what was done with the rest of the college. And I'm just wanting to make sure that the faculty are part of the plan, especially with regard to governance and how that data is used. And I don't see much input there in their work. So, as you work with them, I hope you could impress upon them that we do have faculty who are responsible for students at the auto center who say how wonderful the faculty were. They didn't say how wonderful the IT was, although it is. But I want some attention paid to that, please.
And we will.
I was just going to say, I thought I saw that in there, that faculty was in there.
I looked at it three times over. Be glad to see it if you'd like.
Any other questions?
I think most of the questions were, you know, asked of what I was going to say. Now, how soon do you need to have this for us to vote on this?
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
We wanted to give you, this is important, obviously.
Sure.
We wanted to give you time to look over the information, to look over the presentation. And if you have any questions, you know, this gives you a month to call, so we can answer any questions you might have, so that we can bring this up at the next meeting for a vote.
So, we go on to Tab F, and that is the Contract Extension of Power Wellness. You're up again.
Thank you. I think also in the audience, I believe Dawn Lyons, Dawn is here. Dawn, would you mind standing up? Dawn, would you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Mrs. Dawn Lyons. I'm the Center Director at the Center, and I've been in my position now for roughly 20 months, I think.
Thanks, Dawn. Each year, we provide to the board an operations performance review, and I didn't intend to go through that. You've had the materials ahead of time to review, and be glad to answer any questions. Dawn, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have around that. But I did want to provide just a summary of that, and it's in the board materials and in the memo. And in summary, the Center has continued to strongly serve the community. Community membership has continually grown. I think if you were to ask Dawn Lyons and her team, she would say that during peak hours, we probably are pretty much at capacity during peak hours, which is tremendous. And Dawn and her team have done a wonderful job of looking at ways of serving different segments of the community as opposed to traditional members, which includes the health integration side, and that's a strong set of partnerships. And we've maintained our certification as a certified health center with that, which has really, really helped. And that also helps to utilize the Center in off-peak hours as well with that. Student members has gone down a little bit over the three years, but stayed around flat. And we've continued to look for ways to engage with students, and we do it in multiple ways. We do it through orientations, we do it through our PEA class. And this year, actually, a collaborative effort between Dean Greaves and Dawn Lyons as a ways to, with the PEA students, to keep them more engaged during that semester. And that's been very, very successful with that. We did go back, and we do, each year, we do different forms of surveys with our members, including students. And we went back and looked at student satisfaction and their comments. And strongly, those that are at the Center really, really like the Center. A few students said, "You know what? Cost is an issue." And the issue is, how do we compete with Planet Fitness at all? But we've looked at it, and we've made a commitment for next year that we will reduce the student fees by 10% for next year, as a move towards that direction for that, and continue to work with students. Dawn and her team are looking for other ways that we can offer classes for students, find classes that resonate strongly with students, not just as a general fitness membership, but just other kinds of classes other than, say, the PEA as well. So, I think we have and will continue to work strongly on that part. If you look at our satisfaction scores, those have been strong and keep getting better. And also, from a financial point of view, our goal, our charge and our goal has been, is that the Center in its operations will have no net use of funds over time. That's the goal. And we've worked hard to get it to a point where it is not doing that. It's actually generating enough cash to be able to pay for not only the debt service, but also for any deferred maintenance. And so, that's, I think financially, performance-wise, the Center has done well. The partnership between Power Wellness goes back to inception. We have monthly meetings, we have two kinds of monthly meetings, that I and team meet with Dawn each month. We have very detailed sessions. Dawn also meets with facilities each month on a regular basis, because kind of the biggest challenge that we have is the maintenance of the facilities. It's 10 years old as a center. It's starting to show its age a bit, and doing that maintenance in a way that doesn't cause huge interruption to the member experience is always the challenge. And so, we have a lot of engagement around that. We have a lot of metrics that we look at around that. It's been a very strong partnership that we've had with Power Wellness. We went back through the contract again, and really, the only change that we've made to the existing contract that we are proposing to put in the new one is that they have a manager fee of $125,000 per year, of which about 25% is at-risk, roughly. 25% is at-risk, and there's a number of factors that allows Power Wellness to earn that at-risk portion. We've now added in a student engagement factor into that at-risk sector. And Power Wellness is open and willing to work with us on that factor, because we know that's really important, that's at the heart of what the Center is about, and we need to continue to challenge our ways. So, we would strongly recommend that the board consider a three-year extension with the option for a three-year renewal. Of course, the board will get annual reports back from the college on the performance of the Center towards that end.
Any questions? Yes.
Couple of questions. Dawn, are you employed by Washington Community College or by Power Wellness?
I'm employed by Power Wellness.
Thank you. Second question, could our, with respect to the declining student members, could our counseling office play any kind of a role in encouraging membership at the Fitness Center?
I think so, because we're receiving the biggest decrease, especially in the PEA 115 course. And I feel like that's the one area that we have the least amount of control over. So, that's why I would like, you know, we have been discussing, and maybe there are some other courses that we could be offering out there. Perhaps we could be a yoga course for that PE credit. So, we're open. Even though they have access, they can just come to the Center, and we offer lots of different, over 100 classes a week, but just anything to help engage. We've even done some marketing on our own, just, you know, the only class that gets you in the gym, and we put those out on Facebook, and the college has also put those ads out on their Facebook, and so it's only good as well. So, definitely open to ideas and the company of those conversations, bringing everybody to the table and see what we can do.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
When I was a student, I was able to use financial aid to pay for PEA 115. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Okay. That was really nice, because I couldn't pay for my membership out of pocket, but being able to use my financial aid dollars, I was able to get a couple of semesters of PEA 115. So, that was really nice, to let students know that.
So, PEA 115 is a half-credit class, and then students can take it for up to three credits?
Yeah, there's a max on that, yeah.
So, that'd be the max.
Yeah, that was really nice. I enjoyed that.
Any other questions? Yes.
How much of, or how many, or how much time from our maintenance staff does maintenance over there?
We have two full-time folks that are based out of the Health and Fitness Center.
Okay, that we pay.
That are on our rolls.
Okay.
And it's part of the financials. So, when you look at the bottom line, it's covering the cost of Power Wellness, as well as our two full-time staffs.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. Couple of them. One of them has to do with, let me go back here, excuse me for a second. I know you talked about the student membership, and that was one of my questions, but I'm looking at the 18 budget. It looks like this is just an assumption that you put down here for the 18 budget? And so, how are we marketing for the community? Because it looks like the community part is there for new memberships, but how are we marketing for additional community members?
We work, we have, let's see, probably about 10 different market segments. We did deep market analysis of where we thought that our Center would best resonate within the community. We segmented that out. And over the last three years, Power Wellness has got detailed marketing plans for each of those segments that we then strategize on and we set goals for.
So, these are out, like, in targeting the Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti area?
Yes.
Manly, those two?
Yeah.
My other question was, oh, are you planning to reduce 10% of the student monthly dues and still be viable?
It's, if you look at the total student dues as a, as part of the whole, it's not as significant. So, that's, what we're hoping is that the revenue that we are going to lose from that will be at least partially offset by new student members that will come on. And we're really going to use this price reduction as a promotional effort to further engage with students.
So, the promotion would be just for a short period of time? That's what you're saying?
Well, the price, the price reduction would be permanent.
Okay.
But the promotional thing, we really would hit it hard, say, this summer going into the fall, to say that, hey, that we really, we've heard you loud and clear, we reduced the student pricing, and we're hoping that that's going to engage more students to want to.
Okay, yeah, because I saw where the student surveys were saying that, the price. Okay. And then my next question is, do you want us to vote on this tonight, or you just want to wait until next month?
We, our current contract goes through the end of February, so if the board wants to wait till next month, that works for us.
Okay. Is that acceptable for the rest of the board? Whatever he wants. So, I'm just looking at, you know, if we could do it tonight, I think that.
Let's wait until next week.
Till next month? Okay.
We were asked to do it tonight.
We'll do it next month? Okay, all right. Then, there's the next one.
Next one. So, we had, as part of the second-floor fan terminal unit project, we have to work on the ceilings, to tear out the ceilings that relate to the areas. Once we started to do that work, and we had originally bid it just to do the demo and the rebuild work on the ceilings for the areas that were impacted, once we started to do it, we really realized, you know what? We really should do the whole ceiling, not just those areas, because it was, so the team says, "Let's go get an adjustment to the quote for what it would take." And so, what it did is it caused the contract to go from below needing board threshold to above needing board threshold. And so, this would be for the board to approve a change order to an already existing contract that would take the total amount up by $44,000. And that's the approval that we would be asking for, for the work, for that change
Any questions? Sorry. Okay. Number four.
Okay. So, we go on to the next one, the External Auditor Contract Award.
Very good. Well, we, the board had agreed that we would do a one-year extension last year of Raymond with the understanding that we would go out for RFP. And so, we did. We formed a committee with some key individuals within financial services. Trustee Milliken was on the committee. And also, since we jointly bid this out with our foundation, we had Phil Snyder from Administration, representing the Foundation, along with Doug Weber from the Foundation Board as the committee. We asked for a three-year bid. We have, and you see the results on the summary, from Plan Moran, Raymond, UH, YC, four more bids, and Clift and Larson. Ford, four more bids, and Clift and Larson. I would say that by far, Plant Moran and Raymond have the strongest higher education client experience. They have strong local experience. And also, I would say that on price, that Raymond was better. Each and every year, to the tune of about eight to nine thousand a year, better in price, Raymond was than Plant Moran was. And frankly, Raymond has a very strong presence in higher education, and it's a growing presence in higher education within the state of Michigan. And so we have leveraged that. A good example is what's been going on with the Mepser's three percent. Raymond's been strong in working with the state groups that are the ORS and the Budget Office, and they've been good. So the committee, they individually ranked them. You are seeing the average composite score from the committee, and the committee was, you know, unanimous that Raymond would be the best choice for the college for the next three years.
Questions?
As a member of the committee, I just, I wanted to say that each of the bidders submitted to us their full client lists, and my recollection is that Raymond was well-represented through the state with peer institutions and a good bet on that basis.
Okay, great. Thank you, yes.
I want to be clear that I don't have a problem or a complaint with Raymond, their performance and service to the college for the past eight years. However, I do feel that it's not best practice for WCC to continue to contract with one audit firm for an extended period of years. Is best practice three years, five years, or ten years? But I do think that twelve years is excessive. I think it's important to rotate or alternate audit firms so that they have checks and balances on their work. We have an excellent RFP, as you said, for audit firms, and I believe we should change audit firms and rotate them, and I will not vote for a three-year contract for Raymond.
I have a question, then.
Yes, go ahead.
With Raymond, when the auditors come in, is it always the same people and the same eyes that are coming in to look at it, or do they rotate the staff?
They, the manager generally is the same. So you have supervisor, you have staff, lines supervisor, manager, partner. The manager generally is the same, because you want to leverage the higher education experience. The staff and the supervisor can change, although ours hasn't the last couple of years. And frankly, we've enjoyed a lot of synergies with that, that have allowed us to spend time on the deeper issues and not on the process. And that's where I see the greatest value, partners. So as part of Raymond's bid, they offered that if we wanted to rotate partner, so Michelle Fowler come off and another partner come on, that they're fine with that, if that's what we wanted to do. We felt, for this next year, that Michelle Fowler would be, it would be good to retain her as partner if the board were to agree to reappoint Raymond. And the reason is, we are about to go through another big GASB accounting pronouncement, implementation, that Michelle Fowler knows WCC well. And in getting through that adoption of that GASB related to post-retirement benefits and putting another multimillion-dollar obligation on our books, we felt that there was value in that transition. We also see value beyond that, of potentially rotating the partner as a way to address what Trustee Hatcher said, of getting a fresh set of eyes to include the partner on this.
That makes sense. Any other discussion? Questions? This is just a discussion, and this will be taken up next month. Good, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Johnson. Oh, we got one more. External auditor contract award?
No, we're...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. All right. Recommendation for new programs, 2018-19, Vice President Hines.
So we have four new programs that are being recommended. I'm gonna let the deans introduce those programs, starting with the two new animation programs.
So as Kim said, that we have two new animation, these are advanced certificates that we're bringing forward. And I just want to preface this with that, in the fall, we actually hired a new full-time faculty member in animation, and he's amazing. He has just hit the ground running and developed all these programs and courses. He built an online course that the faculty reviewers said was one of the best they've seen. So, I mean, kudos to him, he was a great find, so we're really happy with that. The two new programs, they are advanced certificates, so it's an additional credential that students can get. The first one is animation for film and broadcast, so that will give students the opportunity to get into the film industry. The second one is for game design, which is incredibly popular, as video games just will never die. They will just continue to advance. And students are really thrilled with that kind of program, so we're very excited to have that on the books. One additional thing I want to say about Kevin and the program is they're also going to be doing a summer camp this year geared towards upper-level high school students to get them interested in our program, to try and recruit those students in. So we're pretty proud of everything that they've done. It's a great accomplishment.
Any questions regarding this? Here are none?
Two more, there's two more programs.
So the other two are engineering-based, so we have two animation, we have two engineering-based. In the engineering, we have one with a transfer and one with an occupational or terminal degree. So the first one is the pre-engineering science transfer. And we have offered a concentration in pre-engineering through our math and science degree, and this is to make it much more explicit and really help recruit students specifically who are hoping to transfer to a four-year in engineering. We have our big grant with our four university partners, an L.S.A.M. grant, and we're creating a STEM scholarship grant, so this degree will be a nice feeder for our students. The second one is in the Tucker's area, and I'm only going to introduce it in the sense that it's a really exciting partnership between ACED and Gen Ed, because we have a Gen Ed team that's working with Dean Tucker's faculty to make sure that all the Gen Ed requirements are contextualized, contextualized, which will be a little bit cutting-edge.
What we found, both from advisory boards and industry partners, was that there was a need for us to have a multidisciplinary approach as it relates to some of the advanced technologies. As you know, we've invested a large amount of money in our advanced manufacturing program, which has, in a great sense, resulted in grade enrollment increases, about ten percent over the last three semesters. But with that, we found a need for our students to not only have the machine tool, which is some of your more manual, how to repair the machine, but also some of your advanced engineering, manufacturing processes. And what this does, this allows for really the convergence between both, and prepares students to be able to go out in the industry and run, to learn the full lifecycle of engineering, technology, and advanced manufacturing. And as Dean Good said, it's really unique in the fact that it's truly a partnership with the Gen Ed side of the house, because there are some Gen Ed requirements. And what through the conversations both faculty partners have had, it would allow for really the contextualizing of the sciences and the math, so that students walk out with, not knowing how to just add one and two, but knowing how to apply that one and two to the industry. So, and it's accelerated. So students will be able to finish this, if they stay on the track, in eleven months.
I have a question, no one else has. For the animation and film, are there jobs in this area?
Yes, absolutely. And that's the nice thing about this credential, is some students would now even have to go on for the bachelor's degree. It would give them this additional credential to do that, and the median salary is about sixty-four thousand dollars for someone with this skill set.
With a certificate?
Yes, yes. And it's also attractive to people that might be in industry that just need to get these additional courses and get this additional knowledge, so we may be bringing in people with that as well.
Okay. Wow, all right. Yeah, come here, yes.
Are there any opportunities for internships with the Michigan Theater, State Theater, Ann Arbor Film Festival, Cinetopia, any of these movie and cinema bodies that we've got in the neighborhood?
Kevin, our new faculty member, is very well-connected, and he understands the importance of internships, so that is something that he's definitely looking into. He has a lot of connections in those areas, and he wants to make sure that our students get that experience. So it's definitely something that we would explore.
Russ Collins at the Michigan Theater goes to the Sundance Film Festival, and is well-connected, and they might welcome some of our students with open arms.
And we're going to be hosting the Student Emmys here on campus this year, instead of it being in Oakland County. So, I mean, the faculty are making a lot of really big connections in the film industry, in animation, as well as digital video. We have a really good reputation in that area.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I look forward to it.
Good question. Any other questions? Yes.
I'm always happy to see engineers learning to read and write. It's a lot of... It's an old bugaboo of mine. I used to teach in engineering at U of M, teach humanities. And I also noticed that you've added the curriculum review, which is very nice to see that the curriculum committees and assessment have reviewed. It says reviewed, it doesn't say approved. I mean, they could have reviewed it and hated it.
They did not.
I know, but I'm just thinking, you might want to change the language a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much. Then, you again.
Me again. So we have one small program here that is being discontinued, and this one's not been on the books that long, but I think with all the changes that are going on, especially in the technology industry, we've been, you know, trying to respond to industry and try new things in programming languages. And this was one where it just did not make a lot of sense on the credit side. It was something where people were stealing up, taking online courses, be it through Coursera and all kind of other opportunities that are a lot less time-consuming than what we were doing. And so we're going to discontinue this C sharp programming, but we have seen a lot of those students falling into our job of programming, where we're putting some more investment.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good reports. And now we're going down to cab, tab K, appointment of board negotiating team for 2018 WCC EA contract. And it will be Vice President Veltre.
Good evening. The resolution before the board called for the approval and the appointment of our bargaining committee in connection with our upcoming collective bargaining with Washtenaw Community College Education Association. The proposed team involves individuals who've either participated in prior negotiations here or play a principal role in supporting our labor relations effort here, as well as having the operational perspective, or I guess what I would say institutional knowledge necessary to support collective bargaining. So with that, we would ask the board to approve our resolution.
Yes.
And we will be asking for a closed session at another date, so that we can talk about the negotiation parameters with the board to get your input.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Support and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No, it doesn't say.
No, I didn't think so. It just says action. Okay, all right. Thank you. It's been moved, supported, and voted. Yes.
Vanessa, put the names of those people in the minutes? Or not? Yeah. Does that happen? Is that what usually does? Because it wasn't read.
Well, you want me to read it?
No, no. I just want to make sure the names are in there.
Okay. Sure, I don't think that'd be a problem. Okay. Yes, anything else? Any others?
No.
I move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Support? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.